Organizational meeting, and we'll go straight into our regular business meeting following the organizational meeting. Mr. Short, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, here tonight. It's good to see another almost full house. It's becoming a regular event here, and it's good to sit up here and look out and see citizens actually involved in the community. So, thank you all for coming out tonight. We're going to start out with our organizational meeting, and then we'll go into our regular business meeting. And the first on the agenda for the organizational meeting is to appoint our charter officials. And our charter officials are Mike Hamp as city manager, Mary Grace as our city assessor, and Julia Bordle as our city clerk. Is there a motion to appoint these three to these positions?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? This motion carries 5-0. Thank you all very much. Item number three on this agenda is to appoint an acting--
Do you have a city attorney?
We've got--
I was kind of hearing that.
Item number three is to appoint an acting clerk of council to serve in the absence of Ms. Bordle. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Hamp as the acting clerk?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. All right. And item number four is to make appointments to our finance committee, but over the last two years, we haven't had a finance committee. The council and staff get together and have budget sessions where all five members are participating, so there's no committee. It's all five members, and we're going to forego appointing a financial committee this year and keep it the same so that all five members are part of the finances of the city. And then, number five is to consider appointing council representatives to the planning commission and to the Parks and Recs Commission. Currently, I am sitting on the planning commission, and Dr. Hostetter is sitting on the Parks and Rec Commission. We both agreed to do another term at this. So, is there a motion to reappoint me to the planning commission and Dr. Hostetter to the Parks and Recs Commission?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Miss Vice Mayor. I don't want to say Lana, but it's like, no, her last name's Williams, Ms. Williams. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And then, item number six, and this will close out our--this part of the meeting, is to adopt the fiscal year 2022 meeting calendar. Has everybody had a chance to review that? Is there a motion to adopt the attached calendar?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any--is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you all very much. And that concludes our organizational meeting for this evening. And I guess I got to tap it up, bring in regular business? Or do I just move on? Okay. All right, so we'll move right into our regular business meeting. Just like any other meeting, we're going to have citizen comment period. If you wish to speak during citizen comment period, or I believe we've got--
Three public hearings.
Three public hearings. If you wish to speak at any one of the three public hearings or the citizen comment period, there's sign-in sheets in the back you can sign up for. If you're signing up for the citizen comment period, council's here to take information in. We will not be replying to anyone that makes a comment tonight, so when you address council, you just address council as a whole. We take in what you're telling us, and if you wish to speak to one of us one-on-one or a couple of us one-on-two, we can meet with you at a later time to talk about your concerns. Mr. Hamp, do you have the information for those wishing to call in?
Yes, sir, I do. Excuse me. The call-in number remains the same, 844-844-9200. When prompted, the access code for the meeting is 398145, then the pound sign. That's 398145 and the pound sign. You'll hear--the caller will hear a statement that the Q and A session has started. At that point, press star six. You will hear, if you'd like to speak, please press one to be added to the queue, and at that point, please press one, and then our moderator will prompt you when it's your turn to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. That brings us to item number two on our business meeting agenda, and item number two is to adopt the meeting agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look it over? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Dr. Hostetter?
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item number three is to consider the items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you all very much. Item number four is matters from the mayor. I've got two things tonight. One is, we got a thank-you letter for our Parks and Recs Department from Lieutenant Rachel Pruitt, who had a rock--the Kittle event to benefit the Salvation Army at Ridgeview Park on June 5th. They collected over $15,000, and that money will provide life-saving services for the hungry, homeless, and helpless individuals living in Waynesboro and East Augusta County. And they wanted to thank our Parks and Recs Department for their support and all their hard work. So, thank you, folks that work for Park and Rec and make the city a great place with our beautiful parks and services. And then, the next item I have is to announce a retirement. We've got Ronnie Sweet, who is one of our EOC supervisors. They dispatch the police and fire and rescue departments within our city. Ronnie was with us for over 30 years, worked hard at this position. He's going to be very well missed, big shoes to fill, but we hope he enjoys his retirement. We want to thank him for his hard work and service within our community. Item number five is matters from council. Does anyone have anything they would like to share tonight?
I just want to quickly thank staff and both the support staff and our Parks and Rec Department for what, from all occasions, while we were traveling, the Short family was traveling. I've heard wonderful things about the fireworks show over at Sunset Park, and incredibly well-received and appreciated. So, I just wanted to extend my gratitude on behalf of the community.
Great, thank you.
And I'll tag on to that, that Parks and Rec did put together another one of their runs yesterday morning, or Saturday morning it was, 5K and 10K to tie in with the fireworks for the sunrise spectacular and then the sunset spectacular, I guess it was. But, again, well done, had the space and well managed in these times. And then, if I can continue, I've got COVID updates. Again, I try to bring you the latest I can find from the Virginia Department of Health and other sources. There's been a little disturbing bump in our COVID cases in Waynesboro, and it's always hard to know if that is a real bump or, for some reason, a statistical bump that won't really lead to anything. But, if you look, there are several increased days here, up to eight cases a day in this past week, which is a big bump. Surrounded communities have not seen that, so that makes me hopeful that that may be just statistical, that, you know, for some reason, they got shuttled into our category, but I think it's something we have to be aware of. In terms of vaccines, we continue to move, unfortunately, at this point, baby steps. Fifty-two percent of the entire population now has had one dose, at least one dose of vaccine. Forty-seven percent of the Waynesboro population that is eligible has been fully vaccinated. Amongst adults, we're up to 64.9%, so getting close to that 70% goal is one dose, 59.2% fully vaccinated. So, again, we've sort of slowed our progress there. So, I encourage people to go out and find it. It's still very widely available. That ties into the next thing, Delta variant. You've been hearing about it. It is a variant of the COVID virus, excuse me. It has been found in central Virginia. I saw an article that there have been some cases identified in Lynchburg. So, we're going to be seeing it, and what the statistics from around the country tell us is that the vast majority, upwards of 99% of the folks that are being hospitalized with it and are dying from it are unvaccinated. So, it is really a stark line. So, again, a reminder and hopefully some encouragement for those who've not gotten a chance to get vaccinated, to look into it and get it done, because if that comes our way, that's those are the folks that's going to hit the most. But, as I said, we continue to see progress, so hopefully we can keep it up.
Thank you, Mr. Hostetter. Anyone else have anything? Okay. All right. We move on to item number six, and item number six is to hold a public hearing to receive public comment and consider introducing an ordinance at the request of Mark Holmes to change zoning of 1017 New Hope Road, tax map number 45-2-9B Baker, from highway business to local business. Mr. Judee?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. See if we can get to where you can see. Still not fall asleep here. Great. So, the Red Brick House is an old home that's located at 1017 New Hope Road, near the downtown Walmart. Their request tonight is for rezoning from its current designation. So, it's located right here in the center of the city off of Broad Street on New Hope Road. The applicant here today is the owner of the parcel, and he's requesting a rezoning from the HB Highway Business Zone to LB Local Business. Now, the property is home to the Arnold House, which is commonly known as the Red Brick House, built in 1820. It was owned by the city for many years, and then there was a committee formed, and then the committee ended up selling it to Mr. Holmes. The house is currently vacant. It's not in great shape. The applicant worked on doing some stabilization to the house a few years ago and is interested in renovating the property further. However, he would like to use the structure as a single-family residence rather than as a business. And given the age of the structure and the fact that it's a house, it would be much easier to renovate it as a home than as a business. It would be quite expensive, I think, to try to renovate it to commercial building code standards, and also with the sort of irregular shape and topography of the lot, it'd be very difficult to provide the required parking for a business use on the site as well. And so, because he would like to renovate it for that purpose, and it's more likely to be successful, he's requesting a rezoning. The HB Highway Business Zone doesn't allow for any kind of residential uses, and so we have to rezone it to this LB to make that possible. The surrounding land uses here, you can see that there are single-family homes just across the street, along New Hope Road, and also on Ohio Street. Roses and the old Willow Oak Shopping Center is just to the east, and then, as I mentioned, the Walmart Neighborhood Market is right here on Broad. It's also just to the south is the old Presbyterian Cemetery. This is considered a downzoning. That means that we are moving from a zone that allows for more intense use of the property to a zone that allows for less intense use of the property. So, generally, that's easier because you're not adding further entitlements in this case. The surrounding area is largely made up of single-family homes and smaller commercial structures, so we feel that this use would be more consistent with the other uses around there as well. Additionally, why I think that this is an appropriate rezoning is that the HB zone is generally used for parcels that front on a major corridor, so like a four-lane road. Almost all of our HB zones, and I mentioned this before, front on our four-lane commercial corridors. And it tends to be--HB zoning is kind of inconsistent with the existing building stock and the comp plan in that area. The LB zoning would allow for it to be used as a single-family residence, but it wouldn't preclude a small-scale business or office use in the future if that became more profitable. Here's the comprehensive planned land use map for that area. As you can see, along Broad Street and where the Willow Oak Shopping Center is, that's considered the downtown extended area, which HB would be an appropriate zone for. However, where the subject property is, is located in this medium-density residential area up here. So, the desired land use in the comprehensive plan does not match the current zoning out there. Almost all of those houses are currently zoned HB, which could be an impediment to them receiving financing in the future. And actually, Planning Commission, in discussing this application, discussed doing a more general rezoning of the whole area down to either RG5 or to possibly MXB or LB as a transitional zone there. And we may be bringing you that in the future, since it's sort of the largest area that doesn't match the comprehensive plan. But, in this case, we just have one private applicant who's asking for this particular parcel. We do have some concerns often about spot zoning, again, because it's not actually bordered by any other LB parcels. That often comes up as a concern. Really, a zone should be a more coherent area, several parcels near each other. However, we feel that currently all the parcels in this downtown core area here across Broad Street are LB, so it's not too far away from one. But, more significantly, our attorneys have advised us that it's not spot zoning if it matches the comprehensive plan. So, if we're moving towards the city land use maps, desired land use, then that's not a concern. So, staff recommends approval. We believe the rezoning is consistent with the long-term vision for the area, appropriate for this property and the building stock, and would be in the city's best interests. As I mentioned, we may want to consider rezoning parcels in the vicinity eventually as well, but wouldn't want that to hold up this particular project. Are there any questions?
Anyone have questions for Mr. Judee? Now, being LB, that does entitle him to use it as a residence, correct?
Correct, yes. Single-family homes are allowable use in the LB district.
Okay.
I guess one question would be, if--would we better off doing a deeper evaluation of what the long-term desired zoning classification should be, rather than, I mean, obviously, a medium-density residential doesn't necessarily align to an LB district where you could have a commercial use. Spot every other property could be an LB use, a commercial use. And so, I almost wonder if it might be more inclined to, rather than doing a half step down, do a full step down into the zoning.
I guess my thought is that I wouldn't necessarily want to--the applicant is paid to submit his application, and I feel that the requested zone is moving in the correct direction, so I wouldn't want to hold up for that. But, I do think that there's wisdom to that. Now, my thought personally is that if you did do a larger evaluation, you would probably still end up with something like LB in this location, because you've got HB, you've got a Walmart right here, so that's a pretty intense, about the maximally intense commercial use for that spot. So, I think you'd want some kind of transitional zone to the RG5 anyway.
That makes sense.
But, without looking at it further, I can't say for sure. But, I'll get the Planning Commission to talk about it, though.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thanks.
Yeah.
The lots there adjacent to this property--
Yes.
Between it and the cemetery, what are those lots? I can't picture what's there.
That is, it's directly adjacent to the cemetery.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, is there a structure there at this time or no?
I'm sorry, on the subject parcel or on the--
On the one adjacent.
No, this is the cemetery right here.
Oh, that is the--
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Actually, two lots are in between the parcel that I own as well as the cemetery. Originally, I think in 2010, there was approval to build an apartment for those other two lots there, but as since the people that were looking at it have vacated it now.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It looks like it's adjacent to the cemetery. It's not--
Right, just on our map, they are outlined, like they are separate lots, that's what I was asking. Because would they be included in that? I mean, I guess there's nothing there now.
No, nothing currently. Hold on.
Just this--
Yeah, it's these two lots right here. My apologies. I thought that you owned those, Mark. I didn't realize that was--
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions for Mr. Judee? And zoning commission approved this six--
Oh, I'm sorry. And the Planning Commission recommended approval with a six-o vote, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Most important piece of information I missed.
Thank you, Mr. Judee.
Thank you.
I hereby open the public hearing.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, no one has signed up to speak. It's our habit, however, to offer the applicant an opportunity as the first speaker. So, if Mr. Holmes would like to--
I got one email prior to this meeting of a person opposed. I can give his name and give this to the clerk of the court for the record.
Okay.
Frank Joseph sent an email in asking that we not approve, respectfully deny the request for rezoning, and he lists why he doesn't want the rezoning, but I'll give this to the clerk, and she can make it part of the record.
Good evening, everybody. I was blessed with this house. You know, sometimes they say, be careful what you wish for, because you might just get it. I originally saw this house when I was doing a--with the Small Business Administration project and stuff, and I had people that came up to me and said, you're the guy we've been looking for, because the Red Brick House Committee had tried to save this. Immediately when I saw it and saw the date, the age of it, I fell in love with it. Never thought that I was actually going to end up owning it and have since wanted to restore it. Unfortunately, with the zoning that it is currently, highway business having to put a parking space for every 400 feet, there's not space within the property to put in for parking spaces without destroying the house. That's the first issue. The second issue is, I know I'm not really looking to make money off of this. For me, this is a piece of our history, all of our history. When I think about 1820, when this was built, there were 23 states in the Union. The bricks were handmade behind the place, and so many times, we're always looking to just destroy the past and move on. But, if you don't know where you come from, you certainly do not know where you're going. And I want to make this a place that, one, when I come down here, my in-laws, of course, are from here in Waynesboro, and I come down on a weekly basis, a place that I can stay. But, more than anything else, for people who have been tied into this house, because the reason why you guys gifted to me were all the people who had ties in there, from a guy who used to get high, as he put it back in the 60s, a person who used to deliver paper, people who grew up in the house, they kind of all started following behind me on this, and it would be a travesty to lose that piece of history.
Okay.
That's it.
That's good.
Okay.
Good presentation. Thank you. All right, no other? Okay. I hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce an ordinance rezoning 10017 New Hope Road from highway business to local business?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
Just discussion.
You second?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there any discussion? This ordinance will carry over till our next business meeting, where we'll vote on the final approval. All right. Item number seven is to hold a public hearing, receiving public comments, and consider introducing an ordinance at the request of TV Ventures LLC to close and vacate 40-feet-wide strip of Genacom Drive, reducing the street's right-of-way width from 100 feet to 60 feet in front of 1418 and 1410 Genacom Drive, tax map number 47-1-J and 27-1-JJ. Mr. Judee, your turn again.
Thank you, Mayor. The request actually extends to 1430 Genacom Drive as well, my understanding. So, the location at 1418 Genacom Drive is where Norman Aluminum is in the former Genacom property. It's located in the northern part of the city, just off of Hopeman Parkway, near its intersection with Delphine Avenue. The applicant is requesting that we close and vacate a 40-foot-wide strip of undeveloped Genacom Drive right-of-way that runs down in front of those properties. Staff proposed extending the application to the neighboring parcels as well to try to, first of all, create a logical terminus, so it's not like we just have an odd-shaped right-of-way that sort of jogs in and out, and also to improve the marketability of the adjacent industrial parcels, which are some of our better industrial spots in the city. I'm not sure if you can make out this map or the red on it very well, but this right here is Genacom Drive. It dead ends down here, near the little Oxbow and the South River, and then up here is the intersection with Hopeman Parkway. These are the three properties in which we're proposing to vacate a section of Genacom in front of. As you can see, maybe not very well, but in hashed red here is the portion that we're proposing to vacate. And this right here is the location of the applicant. So, Norman Aluminum is an employer making a decision about expanding at this site or finding a site with more square footage elsewhere, and in the discussions about that expansion, it emerged that most of their site is floodplain, and because of that, it'll be difficult for them to extend off of the backside of the building. They're trying to get about 10,000 square feet for additional office space, so it came out that they could extend towards the front of the building, but they run into the building setbacks. And so, one way to resolve that is to vacate a portion of the Genacom Drive. So, that's the initial motivation for the applicant. Looking at Genacom Drive itself, it's a 100-foot-wide right-of-way that's abnormally wide. Generally, all of our rights-of-way in the city are 50 to 60 feet. It was probably plotted that wide in hopes that it would eventually be some kind of major DuPont-scale industrial development there, and perhaps you would have so many trucks coming in and out that you would want a four-lane road or something like that. But, that was sort of before floodplanes were as big a deal as they are now. It's probably not likely to happen. The current traffic on the road is negligible. The actual pavement width is only 30 feet, and so, because of that, we don't feel that there's any purpose to having this 100-foot-wide right-of-way. Additionally, as you'll see here, the road dead ends down here, and again, this is also all floodway, floodway, not floodplain, and it's not going to be developed at any point in the future. And so, there's really no risk of Genacom Drive being extended in the future to handle more traffic or to serve other areas. So, for that reason, we don't feel that there's really any value to having that wide right-of-way there. All three viewers in this case found no inconvenience to the public, and staff is recommending approval with no assessment. In this case, retention of an employer is an economic development priority. This application was initiated by our Economic Development Department, and it's a way of incentivizing economic development that actually doesn't provide any cost, doesn't, you know, cost the city anything. And as I mentioned, Genacom is unlikely to be extended or widened in the foreseeable future, so there's really no purpose to that right-of-way for the city. Staff does recommend that the ordinance-- Staff does recommend that the ordinance be contingent on recordation of a plat showing new boundary lines. We don't want to get into the vacating right-of-way without a plat, and then having to go dig it up 50 years later, figure out where the lines are. That plat is currently being secured at the applicant's expense. And that we would also ask that the ordinance, and we'll work with Ms. Michelson to prepare the ordinance, to include an easement for access to all public utilities. In this case, I don't believe that we'll be vacating right-of-way where public utilities are located, but there is a water line on the east side of the road that's located directly adjacent to where the new right-of-way boundary will be. So we'll certainly need some kind of access easement, and in a new subdivision, we would have at least a five-foot utility easement to allow access to maintain that pipe. So we'd want to reserve that as well. Any questions for me?
Just a question, so I can envision this. On the diagram that we've got, it looks like that area is currently grass. Does it go right up to the edge of the road, then?
Yes, the 40 feet will take you to pretty close to where the eastern side of that road is. So it's a 30-foot-wide road, and it'll be sort of offset towards one side of the right-of-way. Right now, it's offset towards the other side of the right-of-way. You can kind of see here where I've got the 60 feet to be retained, so the new property boundaries will be closer to where the edge of the road is, but not at it.
Only question I have, Luke, was there any review of the master planning efforts for, at Basic Park with the, our public-private partnership over there with Saka and?
Yes. In that case, though, all of the improvements that they're suggesting are on the west side of Genecom Drive, and shouldn't be affected by anything on the east side. Potentially, I guess you could want to widen Genecom Drive to provide more parallel parking or something in the future, but I kind of don't think that that's the most cost-effective way to provide parking there, and also, you could always do it in this direction, so I don't think that there'll be any issue there. And their actual entrance is up here, as well.
I thought that there might have been, was there a secondary entrance that was?
Yeah, they may have had a tie-in down here as well. Yeah. But again, it's a 30-foot-wide road, which was 15-foot-wide lanes for two-lane roads.
Okay, great.
More questions? Thank you, Luke. Alright. I hereby open the public hearing.
The city is the applicant. I don't know, Luke, is there a representative from Newman? Okay, so no one else has signed up to speak, sir?
Okay. I hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce an ordinance closing and vacating 40-foot-wide strip of Genecom Drive, reducing the street's right-of-way width from 100 feet to 60 feet in front of 1418 and 1410? What was that third number?
1430.
1430, okay. And 1430 Genecom Drive.
I'm going to introduce it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. This will also carry over till our next regular business meeting, and it will be heard for the second reviewing. Item number eight is to hold a public hearing, receiving public comment related to housing and community development needs and input and development needs in the cities for specific CDBG-eligible activities. Mr. Jude?
Lot of me tonight, I'm sorry. Condolences to you all. Tonight, we have the public hearing to assess needs for the Community Development Block Grant entitlement funds for fiscal year 21. That's federal fiscal year 21, not our local fiscal year. Just quickly explain what the CDBG program is. If you've been on council a while, you already know. You've seen this presentation, but for the benefit of the public, I like to give it every time. Waynesboro is a CDBG entitlement community, so CDBG is a federal program to provide funds that help communities to renovate and add infrastructure and support lower-income neighborhoods. The program provides annual grants on a formula basis. There's two different tracks, the CDBG competitive grants and the CDBG entitlement grants. Because of our demographics, we're a CDBG entitlement community, so we receive a fixed allocation every year. The goal of the CDBG program is to develop viable communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment, and to expand economic opportunities principally for low and moderate-income persons, often shortened to be LMI. CDBG allows communities to take on projects that would often be done with private investment in a newer, wealthier area. You know, when you have new development happening, you always have some infrastructure upgrades happening just by nature of private companies engaging in construction there. That's often not the case in areas that have less of a strong property market at the moment, but they're still experiencing infrastructure degradation and require just as many amenities. Areas with weaker economic engines, they experience less new construction and fewer opportunities to cost-share with developers. CDBG has a number of national objectives. Number one is to benefit low and moderate-income persons. Number two is to aid in the prevention and elimination of slums and blight. And number three is to meet needs having a particular urgency. The funds have to be expended in a census tract that qualifies as having low-to-moderate-income households. This dark map here is a map of our currently qualifying census tracts. Fortunately, it follows census boundaries, which rarely make any sense, so you'll see that we certainly have areas that are colored red on this map that we know have less than 50% LMI. They just happen to be connected to another census tract that doesn't. Likewise, we have spots where, you know, you wouldn't think they would qualify, but they're connected to another census tract. And there's some oversight from HUD that allows you to squeak things, you know, if there's an appropriate neighborhood to do a project in, but it requires just more paperwork. CDBG funds can be used for a number of uses. First of all, the construction of public facilities and improvements such as water and sewer facilities, streets, neighborhood centers, and the conversion of school buildings for eligible purposes. Two, for public services within certain limits. Three, for activities relating to energy conservation and renewable energy resources, relocation and demolition of property, and rehabilitation of residential and non-residential structures. And the provision of assistance to profit-motivated businesses to carry out economic development, job creation or retention activities. And this is just a selective list. There's also, you can provide assistance to nonprofits that are engaging in actions that help benefit low and moderate-income persons as well. CDBG funds cannot be used for a number of things. They cannot be used for any kind of operations or maintenance. They cannot be used to displace anything out of your operations budget, and they cannot be used to construct infrastructure that is simply replacing or repairing existing infrastructure and not improving it in some way. They cannot be used for any project located in or primarily benefiting a higher-income area, an area that is above the average for that, for the city. They cannot be used on buildings for government use, on purchase of equipment, or on new housing construct, new market housing construction. So Waynesboro has to submit a consolidated plan. Every five years, there's a lot of paperwork associated with grant, this grant, I always bring that up. And the goals of our consolidated plan are, first of all, to provide decent housing by preserving the affordable housing stock, increasing the availability of affordable housing, reducing discriminatory barriers, increasing the supply of supportive housing for those with special needs, and transitioning homeless families into housing. Goal number two is to provide a suitable living environment through safer, more livable neighborhoods, greater integration of low and moderate-income residents throughout the city, increased housing opportunities, and reinvestment in deteriorating neighborhoods. And then number three, to expand economic opportunities through more jobs paying self-sufficient wages, homeownership opportunities, development activities that promote long-term community viability, and the empowerment of low and moderate-income persons to achieve self-sufficiency. For the fiscal year 2021 grant, we'll be receiving $192,838. We also anticipate receiving an additional $117,000 from the CARES Act that was targeted at coronavirus relief and recovery. And that $117,000 will have additional restrictions. There'll be a very narrow range of activities that you can fund with that. So we'll have to think through how we work with that. Currently, our administrator is the CSPDC. For a long time, Tom Carlson with the WRHA was the administrator of this grant and was very experienced with it. We've transitioned over to the CSPDC with his retirement. Like, as I mentioned, it's a very labor-intensive grant to administer. You have, all the projects have to meet Davis Bacon Wage Act, ADA, historic preservation, small business. It's supervised very closely by HUD, so we're currently going through a transition in administration, and that may cause some hiccups in our spending this year. Of the non-administrative expenditures, a max of 30% can go towards projects in commercial areas designated for slums and blight, which is currently our downtown area. But the other 70% must be in LMI neighborhoods, so those are the two places that you can use them. Things we've done with this in the past, just to give you an idea, a lot of the sidewalk work along Arch Avenue was done with CDBG money, some of the facade grants for downtown businesses, the rehab program for homeowners who are unable to keep up with their properties. We helped a lot of folks who were experiencing zoning notices and violations, but who turned out to be, you know, elderly homeowners who weren't able to make the repairs themselves. We've done significant water system improvements in Port Republic and the Basic City area to relieve pressure issues in those parts of the city. This past year, we received the first segment of our CARES CV, CDBG CV money, and used that to, for a COVID relief program through social services, and we've also begun funding homeless services through the Warm Organization partnering with them. They already have a really great operation on the ground dealing with that, and so we've been able to funnel some money to them as well. And there are a whole other list of projects we've done with CDBG over the years. We have a number of CDBG-funded projects that are sort of in the hopper, or they're currently underway as well. You know, you're off in a year or two, working in multiple fiscal years with this grant. One of them is the Fourth Street sidewalk and Delphine Avenue crossing in Basic City, trying to create a better crossing for the Basic City neighborhood, so that if you're east of Delphine, it's easier to get over to the parts west of Delphine. Delphine is a 60-foot-wide, you know, curb-to-curb road. It's a real barrier for pedestrians in that neighborhood. We have the Port Republic Road Neighborhood Plan and improvements to Riverview Cemetery. Some of those have already been done, but Neighborhood Plan is scheduled for later this year. We were going to do it last year, and COVID hit, and that's obviously a very community-intensive project. And then more support for Warm Housing Programs is currently underway. We're required to file a citizen participation plan with HUD that provides citizens access to local meetings, information and records, including this meeting, public hearings at all stages of the community development program. It's opportunities for people to provide comments on projects they would like to see happen, and timely written answers to written complaints and grievances. And administering a lot of that is part of what we pay the PDC for as well. But my, our staff and my department are always available to talk to citizens about the subject if anyone has any ideas of what they would like to, what they think CDBG funds should go towards. It's not a large amount of money. I know $190,000, really $160 post-administration. Sounds like a lot if you're buying a house, for instance, but it's not a lot if you're, that's about one block of sidewalk, or, you know, it's not a lot when you talk about infrastructure. But we've been able to do a lot of small, interesting projects throughout the city that I think have had a big impact, despite their size. So this meeting, what we'll do is we'll hold a public hearing, and that'll be a chance for anyone to provide ideas of things that they would like to see funded, or general comments on the program, or the priorities that we've had so far. And then in two weeks, we'll bring you our proposed annual action plan, which will be a list, our proposed outline of how we'll expend the money from this fiscal year. Any questions from council?
No, good job, Luke.
No one has signed up to speak at the public hearing, sir.
I open the public hearing? Nobody has signed up to speak for the public hearing. I close the public hearing. This item doesn't require any action this week. We'll receive some more information from Mr. Jude in the coming weeks and go from there.
Yes, and if anyone has seen this presentation for the first time and does have comments, please forward them to the planning department.
Thank you, Luke. Okay, item number nine is to consider approving revisions to the city's retirement benefit eligibility policy to comply with provisions in the IRS code. I think that's important. Ms. Nicole?
It sounds like it. Good evening, Mayor Henderson, members of council. I'm here this evening to present a revision to the city's retirement benefits policy. As you may know, an employee who retires from the city of Waynesboro is eligible to participate in the city's group health insurance plan. The city's current retirement benefits policy, which administers this plan, should be revised in order to establish the retiree medical coverage plan as one that does not fall under Section 125 of the Internal Revenue Service Code. Plans are identified under Section 125 if the plan participant pays for plan premiums on a pre-tax basis. Waynesboro retirees, however, pay for their plan on a post-tax basis. Therefore, their plan is not subject to the regulations outlined in Section 125. This change will eliminate the current requirement of a qualifying life event, like a marriage or death, in order to make a plan change. Instead, retirees can make plan changes upon enrolling as an eligible retiree or during the city's open enrollment period. Additionally, retirees can drop coverage at any time in accordance with the policy. Also, verbiage has been added to clarify that once coverage has been declined, a retiree is no longer eligible to participate in the plan. That covers the revision. Are there any questions I can answer?
Just a question about how was it being handled before. Were those the, the, sort of, in fact, ways things were being handled, or was it different that people could add it at a different date, or?
We really were administering it as though the whole plan was considered under the Section 125, and then as we sort of dug into it, and we said, wait, there really is sort of this line between the pre and the post-tax. So even though retirees are part of the group plan, as a city, we can sort of carve out that section. And so we figured we ought to go ahead and do that, so we could recognize that a little bit differently.
So by doing this, you're basically taxing them, or not taxing them, on the insurance, correct?
Well, so, a way to think about it is for an employee, if I have our insurance, that amount, if I pay $50 a month for insurance, that's getting taken out before my money gets taxed, so that's pre-tax. But if I'm a retiree, I'm no longer collecting a paycheck from the city, so I'm just getting an invoice that says 50 bucks. And so I'm paying that $50 on money that's already been taxed, so it's post-tax.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do we have any statistics on how many folks are currently participating? How many retirees?
We have about 40 retirees, and that number is really pretty stable, because it's sort of, as people come on, they come off, so it really is kind of always at that number. It'll jump five or so either way, but it really kind of stays around that number.
Thank you, Nicole. Alright, is there a motion to approve the recommended revisions to the retiree health insurance plan?
Subdued.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you all very much. Item number 10 is to consider affirming by a simple motion, a petition to the Circuit Court of Waynesboro that no writ of election be ordered to replace city sheriff upon his retirement. Mr. Hand?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you're likely aware that our Sheriff Joe Harris Jr. will retire from his position effective July 21 of this year. That's in advance of the end of his term of office, which concludes on December 31, 2021. The Code of Virginia provides that if a vacancy occurs in an elected constitutional office prior to the conclusion of the term, and if the vacancy occurs within 12 months of the office's terms end, then the highest-ranking deputy who is a qualified voter for and hold that office shall be vested with the powers and shall perform all the duties of the office until the qualified voters fill the vacancy by election, and the person so qualified has qualified and taken the oath of office. Since Sheriff Harris's retirement is within 12 months of his term, and the sheriff's election is scheduled for November, a special election is not required. This being the case, the council may petition the Circuit Court to request that no special election be ordered, and that upon receipt of such petition, the court shall grant such request. Our judge, Judge Paul Dryer in the Circuit Court, has indicated that he would prefer such a course of action, and actually, a petition that we not hold a special election has been submitted and approved by the judge. This evening, council is asked simply to affirm that course of action and concur in that regard by simple motion. I can tell you as well that that course of action is satisfactory, because we have an individual who fulfills those code requirements in order to assume those responsibilities.
Any questions? Is there a motion to affirm the proposed course of action to no petition for writ of election?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Item number 11 is to consider introducing and adopting an ordinance receiving funds from the State Department of Elections. Mr. McCormick? Sporting a very new look, and I like it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item 11 on your agenda this evening is to consider an ordinance appropriating funds that will be received from the State Department of Elections for increased compensation of the registrar and electoral board during the last session of the General Assembly. During the last session of the General Assembly, changes were made to authorize salary rates to the compensation of registrars in Virginia. These changes were not available at the time of the adoption of the budget, so amendment to the 2022 budget is necessary. Since this appropriation is for the receipt of funds from the state, the council may introduce and adopt this ordinance if it so chooses. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them now.
Any questions for Mr. McCormick? Yes, sir, good job. All right. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance just presented by Mr. McCormick?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. All right, item number 12, Mr. Hamp, Correspondence Communications and Calendar.
Yes, sir, I have one item this evening, actually two items, I apologize. August 4th, the city will conduct a design public comment event regarding the Phase 3 Greenway. That's the segment of the Greenway that is contemplating moving from Wayne Avenue on 14th Street to Magnolia Avenue. That public comment period will run from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM and be held in the Meeting Room A at the Waynesboro Public Library on August 4th. Again, that's August 4th, 5 to 7, Meeting Room A, a public comment period on the design on Phase 3 of the Greenway, that segment of the Greenway from Wayne Avenue to South Magnolia on 14th Street. And then a reminder that at 6:00 PM this Wednesday, we'll have a work session, half of which will be an open session. I'm sorry? What did we previously announce? Okay, so I apologize, the work session begins at 7:00. Half of the work session will be an open session and that will cover the New American Recovery Program Act. And then the second half of the work session will be in closed session regarding collective bargaining. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp.
Yes, sir.
All right, that brings us to item number 13, and item number 13 is to hold citizen comment period. For those that have signed up to speak tonight, got a little lighting system here. If you come up to speak, you're going to be limited to four minutes. When you start, the green light will come on, about 30 seconds left into your comment, the yellow light will come on and that's a sign to start slowing down or winding up your comment. And when the red light comes on, your four minutes are up. So if you would, if you've signed up, we respectfully request that you follow the stoplights and signals here. And with that, we'll open up citizen comment period.
Okay. I would say that I'll do my best with pronunciations and if I mispronounce something, please be generous with forgiveness. First speaker is Mr. Craig Scott.
Did he get that right, Mr. Scott?
He did, sir. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, honorable stewards of our fair city. Again, quality of life. I'll reiterate my theme, compassion and efficiency are one and the same. Couple of light bulbs went off in our earlier public hearings. The Holmes family, who are not here now, have actually improved our quality of our life. A minute version of privatization just occurred with the red brick property at 1017. There's also a corollary or a sidebar. It'll help our tourism maybe without costing the city a farthing. So it's a win-win, a restoration of a beautiful old home and quality of life. I also want to talk about the public hearing and community block grant. Again, I mentioned this before, the disadvantage of top-down economics. If we make those areas housing choice, allow the people that occupy these, that are, can't afford it, sell them at 10 cents of the dollar or whatever, allow them the pride of ownership, allow a lower tax rate for incentivizing and building an economic developed infrastructure from the bottom up. Quality of life improves, economic engine improves, and opportunities that are, again, the near infinite variability of the free market. What a person's dream is cannot be regulated, thank goodness. And this is the way it's been done. This is why our republic is so grand, why we are one of the most prosperous, if not least prosperous, nation in the world. It's not by accident, it's by human ingenuity and creativity at the infinitesimal level. So we can raise the quality of life in our city. It costs little or nothing. Actually, we'll build an economic base and draw more people in, therefore expanding the economic base, tax, helping our city and lowering the rates. It's a virtuous circle and we would have a better quality of life, better standard living. This happens all the time all over the world. I've mentioned it in my previous, and I've done my due diligence and I will hand out a packet the next time now that I know I'm allowed to do that. It's a win-win for everybody. People have pride of ownership, cleaner neighborhoods, better infrastructure. Is it a panacea? Of course not. Is it optimal? Absolutely. And it'll help in so many other tertiary ways, better pride, better opportunities for education, better economic and mental health. So I wasn't planning to talk about that, but when I saw this, I know what HUD does, they're not the most, well, anyway, I'll leave it at that, but it's the classic top-down, less bureaucratic sclerotic mentality that has failed, as I said in the previous time, throughout the 20th century, we have writs on that. Anyway, I will continue to aspire for better quality of life in our fair city and I do see lighting a few candles rather than cursing the proverbial darkness. Anyway, I thank you all for your time, patience and maybe understanding, my friends. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Okay, Mr. Dennis or Mr. Donnie Wise?
That was Wise.
Good evening, Dennis Wise. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for giving me a couple of minutes to speak. I put a packet on all of your, your desk or your chair spaces this evening. I'm here speaking on behalf of a number of citizens of Waynesboro who have signed up and requested to be able to receive at-home recycling pickup service. Now, the city does not provide that type of service and so our company is called RecycleOps. You see it on the materials there. And we are an environmental technology firm. I know that sounds very, very odd. You'll hear why the combination is together in a second. And our sole purpose is to increase recycling across America. That's the environmental side. And the way that we do that is we go into municipalities that do not have curbside recycling offered and we make our subscription service available. So a couple of points to know. One, our business is set up very much mimics the Ubers, the Lifts, the Amazon Primes of the world in that it's a subscription service. People can choose to use the service and pay for the service or they can choose not to. When municipalities have free, quote-unquote, "free" drop-off recycling centers, we are 100% in support of that. We also talk about that in our materials when we interact with residents that sign up and come on to our service. And I'm here tonight to tell you that we are about one-third of the way to the minimum number to have the service begin in a municipality, which is 100 homes. We're about 32 homes right now. And Harrisonburg, Stanton and Waynesboro all have been coming to our website and signing up. Harrisonburg is actually starting their service tomorrow. Pickups are happening tomorrow. To go back to kind of the tenets of how our business is set up in the Uber sense of things, there's, there's two things. Operationally, we're set up so that we, we can operate profitably and not have the overhead of having municipal employees. And most importantly, not having those big trucks that are capital-intensive and they tear up your streets. The other side, and you'll learn about this, still operationally, is the employee side. These are gig economy employees, just like Uber. They average about 20, these jobs are local and they average about $25 an hour for them to do this. And they use their own vehicles like pickup trucks to go around and pick it up. Legally, we're also set up this way so that we don't run afoul of any type of city ordinances on the books. If you think about what Uber did, all municipalities have livery and taxi cab ordinances on the books. Uber and Lyft developed their business so that they wouldn't run afoul of those things. We've done the same thing in terms of collecting recyclable materials. Just from a customer-facing point of view, the materials collected all go to, in this region, all go to the Republic Murph in Manassas. It's $12 a month. We pick up every other week. So some months it's two times a month, some months it's three times a month. And it's a very, very simple, subscription-based service. I will stay here tonight if any of you have questions, because I know you can't ask questions now. And for anybody in the audience, there's a few extra flyers if you'd like one. I'll be sitting over here on the side. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wise.
Okay, Ms. Emily Smart?
Hello and thank you for speaking with me today or listening to me speak today. I'm here tonight about the proposal to invest over $14 million in the renovation of Middle River Jail. I'm here tonight because I want to see our town invest in the well-being of its constituents rather than abandoning and persecuting those who aren't doing so well. And I want to tell you the story of two of our community members who definitely need our help. And these two individuals will have a very high risk of winding up in Middle River Jail if the community refuses to provide the help they need, not because they are criminals, not because they are bad people, but because they are suffering and they have no resources available to them to relieve that suffering. The first friend I'll tell you about is a gentleman named Stevie. He grew up very poor in an abusive household and when he entered adulthood, he had no mental health resources available to him to cope with his severe depression. He could not afford prescription medication. He could not afford even a doctor's visit because he had no health insurance. With nowhere else to turn to cope with the condition that he has, he turned to illegal drugs in order to relieve that suffering because he felt hopeless, like he had nowhere else to turn. He has been to jail several times due to his drug use, but the problem is that jail does not treat addiction. Jail simply punishes addiction. So without any accessible and realistic rehabilitation options, my friend is trapped in a vicious cycle of addiction and incarceration, which costs us all taxpayer dollars rather than investing in simply helping him deal with the addiction problem, getting to the root of the problem. It's a vicious cycle. By investing in realistic and accessible drug treatment programs, we can reduce our incarceration rate by reducing the number of people who fall victim to that cycle rather than treating things at the tail end, waiting for it to be a problem and repeating this never-ending cycle of incarceration. Another friend I want to tell you about is from a very different kind of background. I have a very close friend who has a teenage son with special needs and there's actually one of you who knows this family personally. Her special needs son has a severe developmental disability. And when he gets frustrated, he has some aggressive tendencies, punching holes in the wall and breaking things because he's frustrated and he doesn't know how to deal with it. He's about to turn 18. His mother's biggest fear is that he will end up in jail one day because there are no local services available to help him with the condition that he has. He recently had a mental health emergency. He had an episode that became violent through no fault of his own. He's got a disability and his mother could not find the help that she needed. The community service board would not return her phone calls, not because they didn't want to, but because they don't have the resources to keep up with the demand for their services. And without services that are available to families like theirs, this poor boy will probably find himself in a jail cell one day. Once he crosses that age of 18 and society no longer views him as an innocent child, he probably will wind up in a jail cell, not because he's a criminal, but because he is mentally disabled and has no resources available to help. During his recent episode, they actually got kicked out of the local hospital. Not picked out, that's a harsh word. There are no beds available for, for youths. There are no beds available for kids like him because they are underfunded and do not have the resources. So I am here to ask you to reject the proposal to invest $14 million of our hard-earned tax dollars in expanding a facility that does not help our community but punishes them, does not help those who need our help the most. If we're going to spend $14 million of taxpayer dollars, there are far better places to put it, like those rehabilitation services and those mental health services. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Catherine Dane or Catherine Dunn?
Hello, city council members. I'm here to ask you also to reject the 14.5 million renovation plan for the Middle River Regional Jail. We have heard many stories of abuse, mistreatment at Middle River and we know there's need for renovations at the jail, but I do not want to see excessive public funding like where we see with our current plan to further expansions of inmate abuse. I want to see our city council and community invest in rehabilitation services like mental health and addiction treatment. I see members of my community right in my backyard struggling. We all deserve a chance to be productive and happy citizens. This can only happen when our community invests in us and not in the prison system. I ask that our city council reject the current 14.5 million renovation plan. Instead, let's fund a study to determine the factors driving high incarceration in our community. Let's use the results of that study to implement the evidence-based practices to reduce incarceration before any future renovations or expansions. Let's be smart with our funds and make the necessary renovations to improve inmates' quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. A.J. Young?
Good evening, council. I am here as well to ask that you reject the Middle River Regional Jail renovation slash expansive, expansion. Addressing the immediacy of the need to keep the staff and the inmates safe is most definitely paramount, but I would like to say that an additional 30,000 square feet of space clearly is not a renovation. It is indeed an expansion. Last summer, COVID-19 showed us amazingly that we can do some things that we thought we couldn't do. And reducing the number of people in jail was done twice last year. We did it last summer and then in April of this year, we actually transferred those state-responsible inmates to the DOC facilities. Ladies and gentlemen, we're, we're in a carceral state crisis and we can no longer look at the situation that we are in and Monday morning quarterback, armchair ourselves into a situation where it escapes us. And so, you know, we, we did a comprehensive plan with the city of Waynesboro just a few short years ago. What I am suggesting is that why don't we reimagine doing a comprehensive plan about incarceration in this area? I'm suggesting that we hire the Vera Institute. They're a nationally recognized organization that is dedicated to the research in this area. This comprehensive plan would assist us in implementing evidence-based practices to reduce the incarcerations level, incarceration levels. In short, I believe it's important for our community to develop a program of decarceration using the tools that are available to us and to focus our efforts on reducing the number of inmates in our jail. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Andrea Jackson?
Good evening, I'm Andrea Jackson. I live in Ward A. Y'all know me very well, often come and speak and I've also spoke individually about this matter when it came up in January, about the expansion and how it was not beneficial for our area. However, the authority board has kind of went around that, you know what I mean? Because this is, we all know, and I'll be honest, the jail does need to be renovated. Nobody wants anyone to be in inhumane facility, nobody. So I'm not saying that we should not invest money in a renovation because I do believe that there should be renovation. However, I do not believe it should be $14 million and I do think that you should seriously consider reviewing and asking why it's $14 million because this is a setup, because we, we, we organize- Because we organized and we said, hey, we don't want an expansion, we don't want to put more people in the criminal system, and you know what I mean, the authority figure backed off, but they still want to have this expansion, and they're trying to do it by, you know, saying it's a renovation, but it's really an expansion. Because if you approve this square footages and if they actually build it, they are going to put beds eventually. Because we were at the meeting and it clearly says, oh, we're going to do this, but the next phase is if more people are incarcerated, we may need to expand. So the thing is, is that we as citizens do not want more people to be incarcerated and we feel as though it's your job as our representatives to look at other opportunities to decriminalize and for other opportunities. So I also am in support of the municipalities that support Middle River to maybe invest in doing a study with the Vera Institute to see what we can do as a community to reduce incarceration. And I also, you know what I mean, encourage each one of y'all to meet with us, to try to figure out if you'd support this or what would be a figure that would be reasonable to support other than this $14 million, because this is outrageous. The simple fact is, is that our city doesn't have money. We should be invested in the youth and other things. Our school, Waynesboro High School, is on the crumbling tours of schools in Virginia. We need to invest in youth so that they don't go to school. I've always said that, you know, we need to reinvest in the Office on Youth and the Youth Corps and the Kids Corps and to have programs that, you know, stop kids from getting into drugs and other different things. So I encourage you to reply when we do ask to meet with each and every one of you, and we thank you that for the people who've already agreed to meet with us, and we look forward to meeting with and scheduling with y'all who have it already. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Adrian Young? Sorry, Ms. Adrian Young?
So you can move it down. Just grab it, yeah, there you go.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you for letting me come. I also wanted to address the Middle River Regional Jail expansion, and I'm asking city council to not spend more money on the Middle River Regional Jail expansion that plans and expects an increase in incarceration numbers, but apply needed funds to more evidence-based supports that can prevent it. In my profession, I work with folks who are low-level offenders and those that are drug-addicted, and they struggle to handle the fees and the protocols that are necessary to turn things around. Many had challenges in poverty or lack of opportunity or generational dependency that preceded the trouble that they got into with the law. These multiple interrelated social circumstances are only made worse when jail seems to be the only solution. Virginia locales spend about $20,000 per inmate every year. That money would be better spent on community programs to relieve some of the circumstances that lead to the poor or difficult decision-making that lend itself to some of my folks getting into trouble to begin with. Funding substance use programs, youth outreach, or other resources that address the school-to-prison pipeline make a lot more sense than just planning on failing every year, which is what this expansion says. It's saying we're expecting that we're not going to do any better. In fact, we're expecting things to get worse and we're not going to do anything about it, we're just going to let it happen, but we're better than that. We're better than that. We're talking about people, human beings, just like everybody in this room. We can do better to serve our people. Do we need a jail? Yeah, unfortunately, we need a jail, that's the truth. But do we need to build more jail without addressing the reasons why there is an expected increase in incarceration numbers at the expense of building a better community? No, we don't need to do that unless we give up. I'm not willing to give up. I am not giving up on you all to make a good decision about the people that we serve, those that are strong enough to be in this place tonight and those who have made mistakes and are in jail. They're your constituents too, and you need to serve all of us. So I'm asking you just to consider, just consider. We don't need to fund more cells. I'm asking you to consider funding more community, better community, stronger community, that builds better citizens, and that benefits us all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. And just so that the folks know, we've had this discussion up here and we have all agreed that expansion is not what we need to be doing, okay? So we're not for expansion of the jail, but we're also not for warehousing people and letting them live in poor conditions, so we need to do something to the facility that we have to make it a better place. So we agree with you, we don't, we've all sat here, we've had conversations among ourselves, we don't support expansion, but we do support taking care of those that are in our charge. Once they become charge of that regional jail, they're pretty much our responsibility. We've got to make sure that they've got living conditions that are good for them and support them inside of there until they're released. So we agree with you, we're not looking to expand the jail. I just wanted to let that known now, okay?
And I'll just offer too, if y'all have some time afterwards, I can stick around and we can chat after the meeting too, if you'd like.
Okay. All right. Thank you all for your comments, we listen to you. All right, the next item is item number 13, and that is to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Mr. Allen?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Allen makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Short? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five o. Thank you all very much.